Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the May 19th, 2021 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Dennis DeLorenzo?
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.?
Here.
Michelle, would you fire exits and primary into my right?
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have a student matter and an administrative matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We're recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the May 19th, 2021 regular business meeting and certification of election of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Kelly Kozak?
Here.
Here.
Dennis DeLorenzo?
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan Jr.?
Here.
Michelle, would you fire exits and primary into my right?
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. We have one set of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the May 5th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Is there any public participation? It does not appear so. I will move us on to the President's update. Let's see. First, on behalf of the Board, I would like to thank all of the members of our community who came out and voted yesterday in our school budget vote and trustee elections. I would like to pass my congratulations, as well as I'm sure those of the rest of the Board, on to Dennis DeLorenzo and Kelly Kozak, our current trustees, who will be returning for another three-year term, and thank them on behalf of the Board and our district, particularly the 3,500 students that we educate, for their commitment to the work that we do here. We could not do it without everyone who supports this work. And we don't harp on this fact, but there's no financial remuneration that comes out of this. As Lew likes to say, "You get a bottle of water and sometimes you got a pen to write with." That's about the extent of it. So it is the work that Kelly and Dennis and the other trustees do truly is public service at its finest. So thank you very much for running again and believing in the work that we do here. I also, on behalf of the Board, would like to thank Jean George and Michelle DeCarlo and our building principals and everyone who was involved in making sure that the election ran smoothly in all of our buildings. Running an election in four elementary school buildings is a challenging effort in the best of times, and while we are getting closer to better times, social distancing and masks and all of that added a twist to our election process, but an enormous thank you to them for running the election so smoothly. And thank you to the citizens in our community. We were thrilled that the budget passed by more than 80% voting in favor of the budget, and we're really grateful for the support and look forward to doing the work that we do for every child in every one of our buildings. So thank you. I know Dr. Wool's going to give an update on our really exciting summer programs, which are filling up rapidly. If you haven't secured your spot, he'll have something to say about that. I also want to share with the community and thank particularly all of the members of our Fine and Performing Arts programs. They are continuing to do just remarkable things in an environment which makes putting on particularly performing arts incredibly challenging. So on our Fine and Performing Arts YouTube channel, you can currently see the LMK Talent Show. There is animation, there's singing, piano, horseback riding, video editing, and dancing. So I encourage people to go to that YouTube channel and see that. The Harrison High School Footlight Players presented a musical virtually this past weekend, "The Theory of Relativity." Congratulations to everyone who was involved in that. It is just remarkable that we're able to support so many students doing the things that they love. We also have a high school dance performance available on the YouTube channel, and the Harrison Central School District art exhibit is also available on the district website. So we encourage you, the community, to see all of the different ways that our students are sharing their talents, what they love to do with their time in school and out of school. I don't actually know which annual, it's many years now, but this year's Relay for Life will be held this Friday, May 22nd? That's Friday, yes. Sorry, Saturday, Saturday, May 22nd, from 5:30 to 9:30 at Harrison High School.
Live and in person?
Live and in person, and there's more information available on the district website about that. I also want to remind all of the members of the Board that the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Annual Meeting will be held virtually on Monday, May 24th. That will be at 6:30 p.m. If you're interested in attending, please reach out to Michelle, and she will respond on your behalf to West Putt. We have, as we do regularly, more exciting athletics news. Peter Fisher was named the Con Edison Player of the Week. He is a member of our Harrison High School Track and Field Program. He also played on the football team in the Spring One season and now is competing in the Track and Field in Spring Two. We spoke about Peter back in the fall when he signed his Division One letter. He will be competing in Track and Field this coming fall at Harvard. So congratulations to him. And Peter was actually our second Con Edison Player of the Week in a month. Joey Cardassia received...
Oh, actually, it was Tyler Joseph, right?
Oh.
Joey didn't get it.
He was our second in a month, and now I can't remember who the other. I apologize.
That's okay.
In Track and Field, though, we have more just incredible results. We have a truly phenomenal program up at the high school. Joey Cardassia set a school record in the 400-meter dash at the Laos Games. This was also the number-two time in New York State. Megan McGurk, Annika Torelli, Katrina Torelli, and Carrie Gomor also received medals at the Games. The four-by-one-eleven, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Four-by-one-eleven relay team of Mia Boda, Madison Stagg, Kayangchuk Kapayo, and Taylor Herman also medaled. Peter Fisher won the 400-meter hurdles in a time of 54.26. That time was the top performance in the state and the seventh overall best time in the country.
So just to give people a sense of what that means, that means that a young man got around the track in 54 seconds going over hurdles. You know?
Just think about that for a moment, because I'm tired, kind of, I'm tired thinking about it. In addition, seniors Connor and David Grif made the Lo-Hud Tennis Stellar Six preseason list of the top 10 players in the area. So congratulations to them. Football, which I mentioned before, was a Spring One sport this year. We had a number of players from our Harrison Husky football team receive postseason accolades. Casey Juddelson and Troy Strauss were named to All Section. TJ Chafon and Wyatt Keller were named to All Conference. A.J. Troilo, Anthony Palitucci, Thomas Ventriglio, and Nick Reed were named to All League. TJ Chafon was named the Class A League Offensive Lineman of the Year, and Casey Juddelson was named the Class A League Defensive Linebacker of the Year. So huge congratulations to all of them. It's just remarkable to think what they've been through. That was a season significantly delayed, and they performed just remarkably well and we're thrilled for them to be recognized for that.
All right.
As always, the calendar is full over the next five to six weeks until the end of the school year. I will not even attempt to go through the calendar of events that are coming up, other than, as I said before, to remind everyone that Relay for Life will be this Saturday. I encourage everyone to please go on the district website to find out about dates. We've shared before that we are still finalizing graduation information, graduation dates and times. As we've spoken about before, a lot of that is changing simply based on the changing guidance that we're getting from the state. And while we understand that families want to know when we are going to be doing things, our goal here is to make these as inclusive and big and as meaningful as they can be for everyone involved. So if we're going to take whatever time we can to make sure that we are able to finalize the details in the best way possible. So as soon as those are finalized, we will be sharing them with everyone. And I think that is it for me. Oh, I'm sorry, and Rob, Rob is the Chair of our Audit Committee. I think he had an update just about the work that the committee is working doing at the moment.
Sure, thanks, Kelly. The agreement for our external auditing firm is coming to a close, so we've issued a request for proposals for firms to submit for our consideration. We got three proposals back. The committee's been reviewing the proposals and had a chance to interview one firm last week or so, and we'll be making a recommendation for the full board to consider, an agreement for the coming year at least. Sure.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Wool.
One quick moment. I just want to echo some of Kelly's remarks and just to thank the community for the support and for, once again, I just feel gratitude and overwhelming appreciation because the school district is only as successful as the community allows it to be. So thank you, everyone, for coming out to support. And again, just, I feel very fortunate to, again, be re-elected and to serve our community with such a dedicated ethical board. And it's just crazy to think that I'm up for reelection again and that it was three years. And I guess they say, "Time flies when you're having fun." So I guess it's what a year it's been. But it's wonderful to see this upcoming event and that we have a packed calendar of in-person events. And again, thank you on behalf of myself and Dennis.
Let me just echo Kelly's sentiments and simply say, I also am grateful for the privilege of serving this community, working with this administration, and working with the other six people at my sides. As Kelly says, you know, there's no real financial remuneration, but I think the remuneration we get is the work that we produce and all the good that we do, and to me, that's invaluable. So thank you for the privilege to be able to do that work and continue that work to all of the Harrison community.
Thank you. Dr. Wool?
Well, first of all, what a wonderful summary of what's going on, Madam President. No, seriously, you always capture so much of what it is. So I should start by thanking the seven of you on behalf of the employees of this district, the children of this district. I know, Kelly, you laughed and said this has been a tough year, but, you know, I've been at this, I'm starting my 20th year as a superintendent, and this has been one of the most difficult times I've ever experienced as a school leader. And I know that all of my colleagues, principals, assistant superintendents, feel the same way. But it is the, you know, you use the term ethical committed board. I hope our community appreciates how extraordinary the seven of you are, how hard you work for the good of their children, what kinds of sacrifices you make in your own personal lives in terms of time and time away from your own families, to do work that is, quite frankly, sometimes pretty thankless. And we sometimes suffer the slings and hours of people's misunderstandings or their own frustrations, and we accept and understand that, and we try to be gracious. But I am so proud of how we, the collective we, have helped our kids through this very dark and difficult time, and it would absolutely have been impossible without the bedrock commitment of the seven of you. So I just want you to know, on behalf of the community, I certainly never take for granted the power and the thoughtfulness in everything you do, which makes my work, as hard as it is, incredibly rewarding. Because at least, even with the challenges we face, we always know we're allowed to do the right work. And so I speak on behalf of my entire assistant superintendent team, but every principal, every director greatly appreciates this board, and you go out of your way to recognize every member of the workforce, and it means the world to us. Because it's so important in these days when people get a lot of abuse for somebody to say, "Thank you, we see you, we appreciate you." So we thank you for all that you do. And Mr. DeLorenzo, I don't know if I should thank you or I should send you to see a psychiatrist as you start your 16th year as a school board trustee, but we remain ever grateful for your commitment over these many, many years. Couple of things to update you on, many of them pretty serious, so I hope everybody stays with us. We understand that there's a lot of misunderstanding about mask-wearing in general, but for the foreseeable future, now through the end of this school year, there is no change, according to the New York State Department of Health, which has adopted the CDC guidance, in any school setting, you are required to wear a mask, whether you're indoors or outdoors, at all times, in all ways, unless you hear otherwise from us in an official capacity. And we would so appreciate, and I mean appreciate, your cooperation. We do not want to have to engage you in asking you to do it or calling you out in a public setting. Please help us make our lives easier, share the responsibility of keeping us all connected and a community by cooperating. So for now, we sent you an update today to remind and reiterate that the wearing of masks remains an expectation in all of our school buildings and all of our school property. So thank you for your help and support with that. On graduations, I'd like to single out and thank Mr. Salerno in particular and Stephanie Goldman, Assistant Principal at the Parsons School, and our interim Director of Fine and Performing Arts. How the girl does everything is beyond me, but she is so enthusiastic and has worked so incredibly hard. We will have a formal announcement no later than Monday of next week. We're just waiting on a final piece of information. The graduation will either happen over three days or two. That's all we're trying to determine. It will be, all sick graduations will be in-person graduations. They will take place on the campus of Harrison High School. Weather permitting, they'll be outdoors, even if the weather is uncooperative, they'll be indoors. Everybody will be permitted to guests, and we will be able to see and experience a live in-person graduation again. I promise you, details are to follow. Be patient, we're going to get there. As Mrs. Mengen said, "We don't go fast, we do it right." So we want to make sure that it's safe and that it makes sense for you. Also want to thank the senior class officers for their hard work with me, the principal, Mr. Salerno, their two advisors, Mrs. Hart and Mr. Gannell, who've been incredible as we've tried to plan a prom for the first time ever on campus. And we are relatively restricted as to what we can do. Kids have been amazingly supportive and helpful. The high school PTA has also been extremely generous in supporting the prom. If you're a senior at home and you haven't answered the request for a response, please do it. We'd like you all there. The cost is very low, but I think it's going to be a very special, I would even say historic event. It'll be the first time in our history we've had a prom on campus. Faculty are volunteering to serve their students, which is incredibly generous and beautiful. You will not be allowed to bring outsiders, only members of the senior class will be there. So it will really be a chance for these 288 kids to celebrate each other for the last time before they graduate. I certainly hope that everybody takes advantage of the opportunity. There's going to be a giant tent, a disc jockey, and a very large dance floor, I'm told, although I don't know how well you can dance on concrete, but we'll see what kind of moves you have. Couple of other things I want to talk about. You mentioned our Fine and Performing Arts program. I'm stunned at what they have been able to produce. The faculty is extraordinary, just extraordinary. If you haven't seen Mrs. Totata's dance presentation, which is a video basically that shows all of the work going on in our dance program, nine through 12, through the lens of the Wizard of Oz, it is so magnificent. You can see every student in the program, from the most advanced dancer to beginning dancers. One example of how hard our teachers continue to work and just produce these incredible experiences for kids. It's everywhere. So I've said it a lot, if you see a teacher, thank a teacher. They certainly deserve your support. I also want to mention that our newsletter's been going out pretty regularly. Our Communications Director, Joan Tiberzi, has done a magnificent job throughout the course of the year. She was one of the reasons we had that wonderful budget website. But I think we've had two newsletters in the last two weeks. You might have gotten one today, which was just an update of some of the fabulous things going on in and around our school district. My favorite project, I had never seen it before, I don't know if anybody saw the pictures at Preston where they literally recreated replicas of part of West Harrison and had them. So if you haven't had a chance to look, I'd ask that you take a good look and celebrate with us the wonderful things going on in our schools. And I also want to say, and I said this is the last meeting, but it's worth repeating, your principals, all six of them, are working day and night to make things happen in your schools. Please thank your principal, be kind to your principal, and remember, they're doing everything they can to make this experience wonderful for your kids. Now I want to shift to our summer programs, which are incredible, and we have about 1,000 students already enrolled. If you received an invitation to the learning loss component of our program, the Bridges to Literacy program, and you haven't yet registered, please make sure that you do, because after a while, we'll make those spaces available for the next group of eligible students. If you are struggling to register because you, as Mrs. Mengen mentioned, that you may have enrolled in a program that's closed out, Dr. Leydwood's been monitoring this on a daily basis, you can talk to your principal. They can guide you to other options. But we want you to take full advantage of the over 80 courses that are available for your enrichment and academic support. My good friend, Mr. Greenfield, who has the night off, would tell you, as he said to me this morning, the work of our directors of math, science, social studies, English, Fine and Performing Arts, E&amp;L, even technology, have all contributed to developing these programs and making sure that they are far-reaching. Mrs. O'Keefe, Dr. O'Keefe, excuse me, our summer school principal, has also put together some enrichment programs for STEM that are incredible. So please, if you haven't taken advantage of these things, do so. Don't wait another minute. And as you know, one of the sources of pride on our school board is the quality of the professional staff that we have. Our teachers are among the finest you will see anywhere in the country. That is because they are incredibly dedicated and incredibly well-trained. Incredibly well-trained. Unbelievably well-trained. This year, we are running almost 50 courses, I think 49 is the number. I asked Michael if he could add one more so I could say 50. But the enrollment is already building. We expect to exceed 750 enrollees, if not more. The programs will be designed to enhance the skill set of our faculty, and many of our faculty will be using the things that they're learning in their summer professional development right in our summer programs for your kids as a research laboratory. So please be excited about where we are and what we are doing, because we are excited and we are proud. Dr. Leydwood continues to do a magnificent job of managing anything related to COVID, whether it's rules, or surveillance testing, or supporting our nurses who have done such incredible work throughout the course of this year. And I think, Brian, we've crested 1,600 or so surveillance tests with not one positive test in our school. I reiterate, COVID is not spreading in our schools. When it shows up and your child is quarantined, it's typically because it came in from the outside. So please be mindful of your own behaviors and make sure that if you have any concern that you have an infected child, keep that child home until you get a test. We don't want to see anybody quarantined for the remainder of the year. That would be a wonderful thing if we can achieve it. I just want to remind the Board that at our 16th meeting, we'll be recognizing retirees. We have nine teachers and a host of others, civil servants, administrators. Each one of those people's been invited here in person! How nice! Last year, we did it online. We welcome them back, and we'd like to have everybody watch at home and acknowledge the incredible contributions so many of these people make for years and years and years. They literally affect generations of people, so. That concludes my update with one last statement. I want to thank the community as well, because in my time as superintendent, they have supported every school budget that we've put forward. Mr. Salerno closed out his 18 years as a business official last night with a perfect record. Every single school budget that we have put together side by side was supported by our school board and our community, and I think that happens because you've grown to trust us. We try really hard to share everything that we possibly can, to show you that we care deeply about your kids, and that we plan thoughtfully and that these seven people are watching every dollar. So we thank you again for your support.
Thank you very much, and I just want to clarify, I went back to check. I want to make sure that we are recognizing our students appropriately. We have had two Con Ed Athletes of the Week in the last five weeks. You were right, Dr. Wool, Tyler Joseph for wrestling back in April, and Peter Fisher this week in Track and Field. And I shortchanged Joey Cardassia. He was, in fact, the Lo-Hud Winter Track Athlete of the Year, so.
And by the way, just to share a moment, you know what a fan I am of Joey Cardassia. I said to Chris Galano when he said we have another Con Ed winner, I said, "Is it Joey?" Because we should have three, just to be clear. He has had an extraordinary season. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes. Congratulations again to all of them.
All terrific kids.
Um, let's see. With that, we will move on to the personnel report, personnel agenda, which I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing no objections, Item 1, certificated personnel. A, regular appointment, SED clearance received. B, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. C, extra compensation appointment. D, request for leave of absence. E, change of status, Roman numeral 2, non-certificated personnel. A, resignation for the purpose of retirement. B, resignation. C, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. D, summer school appointments, SED clearance received. E, request for... E, request for leave of absence. F, change of status, Roman numeral three, other. A, acknowledgement of student teachers. B, corrective resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item one, acceptance of gift from the Harrison High School class of 2020. Item two, adoption of the 2020-2022 school budget vote and election results. Item three, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. Item four, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. Item five, approval of CSC CPSC annual review. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? On behalf of the entire school board, I would like to thank the Harrison High School class of 2020 for their generous contribution to, from funds that they had collected last year, and they are going to be purchasing picnic tables up at the high school. So, thank you to them for that gift that will be a lasting memory and remembrance of their time in our school district, and again, thank the community for their support of the budget and our trustees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the finance report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none, item one, 2020-21 appropriation transfers. Item two, quarterly report for the extra classroom activity fund. Item three, contract for education services, Greenberg 11, UFSD. Item four, authorization for agreement with Graybar Electric Co., Inc. to provide and install CAT 6A cabling at Lewis M. Klein Middle School. Item five, approval of the Harrison High School photography agreement. Item six, bid award RFB 2021-02, I'm sorry, RFB number 2122-02, floors and floor covering provide and install. Item seven, bid award RFB number 21/22-04, maintain and service food service equipment. Item eight, contract with American Cancer Society, Inc. for Relay for Life event. Item nine, treasurer's report, April 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much. That concludes the May 19, 2021 regular business meeting. Our next meeting will be on June 2, 2021. Just a reminder that schools are closed on Memorial Day but are open on Friday, May 28. That is on some calendars as a day without school, but there will in fact be school that day. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Good night.